I am a voter though.
Then you have to sit, you have to sit up here or in the middle section. We're not, we're not going to acknowledge anyone sitting in that right section. That's for, the left section, that's for non-voters. So what I had to do is move over if you're a registered voter.
That's Mr. Britt.
These are the people who are against it.
Oh, Josh.
Even Daniel said it's here. So I'm so sorry, don't you say, try to turn this into mini part of the second.
This is gonna fail. I don't think it's gonna pass.
I know it's not.
No, given the asses in the Senate.
Right, no way.
Based on who's here.
Yeah.
Yes. So, it was an open town meeting. It's open to registered voters of the town. That means you either registered through the DMV, you went to the town hall, you registered by mail. It means you vote in elections or can vote in elections. If you are not one of those things, you cannot vote at this town meeting or any town meeting. So if you checked in and your name did not appear, that's the voter list. If your, if your name was not on that, you're not a registered voter in the town and you have to check in when you come in. So if your name was not on the list when you came in, it's open to anybody that wants to come and sit here, but it's not open to vote for anybody that is not a registered voter. So anybody that's not a registered voter has to sit up in that second section up on my left. Your right. Yes?
So what happens if you're a registered voter but your name didn't pop up in the system?
I don't know. But I know, Mr. Britt, that's what happened, so I'm gonna let you stay there. I'm gonna let you participate in discussions. And the reality is if it comes a closed vote, we will then address it.
Okay.
All right? Because I know you're the, you're the one that didn't appear on the voting list, but you, you said you're a registered voter.
Yep.
Yup. Just give a few more people to come in. I see a couple people walking in now. All right, I'm gonna go over a couple of procedure things. I'm reading the list of the out-of-town attendees who attend this meeting for various reasons. Congressman Stephen Lynch, eight district house representatives. Jan Advakwa, senior representative for Congress, district senior representative for Congressman Lynch. Charlie Seelig, town administrator. Rebecca Johnson, assistant town administrator. Russ Hannigan, EB Cam director. John Clifford, town council. Chris Kenny, town council. Paula Wolf, director of assessing. Ryan McGonigal, IT director. Patrick Franny, building commissioner. As people walk in, if you please rise and join, we'll... What happened to the flag? You still there? We'll take the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Flag.
United States of America, in due republic, which stands one mission under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll ask town clerk to read the warrant.
In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of East Bridgewater, who being qualified to vote in the elections and town affairs, to meet at the junior senior high school, 143 Plymouth Street, in said East Bridgewater, on Monday, the seventh day of October 2024, at 7:00 PM. Then and there to act upon the enclosed articles to wit. You are directed to serve this warrant by posting a copy thereof attested to by you in writing in each of the six public places in the town, at least fourteen days before the time for holding the meeting called for in the warrant. Herefore, fail not and make due return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk of said town on or before the twenty-third day of September 2024, given under our hands this ninth day of September, in the year of our Lord 2024.
Thank you. And if you could turn your phones off, it'd be appreciated. So if, if you knew the meaning, how this works is, I will ask the purport of each article to, to read their motion. I would then get a second, and then we'd open it for discussion if any on each article, then we vote. Article one. Mr. Sheedy, select, select, what is selectman? Select people.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the total sum of thirty-seven thousand, two hundred dollars, with thirteen thousand, two hundred, to account number one, six one zero five one zero five one six zero, library salaries, eight thousand dollars, excuse me, to account number one, five 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 one zero five one one four, IT director salary, ten thousand dollars to account number one, one two two five one zero five one two six, select, select board clerical salaries, and six thousand dollars to account number one, nine one zero five one zero five one seven five, health insurance to meet obligations for union and personal contracts.
I have a motion, I have a second. Motion made seconded. For discussion if any, Mr. Sheedy.
Mr. Moderator, these are the results of union contracts being settled and for non-union people for contracts that we didn't finish by town meeting time last May.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article One as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article One, say aye.
Finance committee.
Oh, finance committee recommendation. Sorry.
Finance committee unanimously approves this article.
All right, well, vote again. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? It passes by majority. Article two, Ms. Dean, town accountant.
I move that the town vote to rescind the authorization to borrow two hundred and ninety-five thousand from Article seventeen of the annual town meeting of May ninth, 2022, and one million four hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars from Article thirty-six of the annual town meeting of June twenty-third, 2020, for a total rescinded authorization to borrow amount of one million, seven hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
I have a motion, I have a second. Motion made seconded. Ms. Dean, for discussion if any.
These are projects that we previously at town meeting voted to borrow to fund. Two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars was for the town hall and police generator, and it, the project came in under budget, so we're asking to rescind the authorization to borrow for that amount. And the one point four million was for the central school roof MSBA project, and we were originally required to approve the full amount to borrow, but since the MSBA pays, they paid fifty-seven percent of that project, we can rescind that amount.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article Two as presented? Finance committee.
Finance committee unanimously supports this article.
Seeing no further discussion, this will require a two-thirds vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed by two-thirds. Article three, Ms. Dean, town accountant.
I move that the town vote to rescind the following funding sources, as voted as Part Two of Article Two of the annual town meeting on May thirteenth, 2024, five hundred thousand from Water Enterprise Fund retained earnings, and twenty thousand, three hundred and sixty-one from EB Cam Enterprise Fund retained earnings.
I have a motion, I have a second. Motion made seconded. Finance committee recommendation?
Finance committee unanimously approves this article.
For discussion if any, Ms. Dean.
This is a timing issue with DOR, so it was funding voted at the town meeting, but due to DOR requirements, we're rescinding it in Article Two, and then we're gonna revote it, I mean, in Article Three, and then we're gonna revote it in Article Four. It doesn't change anything from the town meeting, it just puts it all the way that DOR wants it.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article Three as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article Three, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed by majority. Article four, Ms. Dean.
I move that the town vote to fund the fiscal twenty-five operating budgets of the Water Enterprise Fund with five hundred thousand of retained earnings for the Water Fund and EB Cam Enterprise Fund with twenty thousand, three hundred and sixty-one of their retained earnings, as certified on August thirtieth, 2024.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Motion made seconded. Finance committee.
Unanimously approves this article.
Ms. Dean, for discussion if any.
This is just the second half of the last article that completes the budgets for water and EB Cam for 2025.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article Four as presented? Mr. Adenfellow, come to the mic and identify yourself. With address. With address.
Jim Warden, Fall Forty-One, Leo Way. If someone, please explain to me, now, as long as I worked in government, the Enterprise Fund was established, created the property that would be self-sufficient, running on the funds that it accumulated from basically selling the product. And every year we came in and we were adding money onto the Enterprise Fund, which we shouldn't be doing the way I understood the law when it was first passed.
Ms. Dean, do you have any explanation?
Yeah, so the way that we fund the Enterprise Funds currently is with current year revenues, as well as any retained earnings that the fund has, which would be revenues over expenses from prior years. There's currently no general fund money used to fund the Enterprise Funds, so they...
We're voting five hundred thousand dollars.
These are from the Water Department's own funds.
Okay, that's what I wanted.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article Four as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article Four, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed by majority. Article five, Mrs. Spagon, select board.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate funds, some twenty-eight hundred to account number one, five four one, five one zero, five one two six, clerical salaries, to fund special longevity requests for staff members and council media partners.
I have a motion, I have a second. Motion made seconded.
... salaries for increased hours for chapter forty-B hearings and associated work.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Sheedy, for discussion?
This came about for all the listings and extra hours that the clerical staff had to put in from zoning board of appeals for all the work assessed with the forty-B hearings.
Discussion from the body? Seeing no discussion?
Finance.
Oh. No. Sure?
I'm sure you got something to say, Jerry.
No?
Never.
All right. Seeing no discussion? Oh.
Finance committee unanimously approves this article.
All right. Doing that, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, that passes by majority. Article seven, Ms. Julius, select board.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two thousand, two hundred dollars to account one, six one zero, five one zero, five one six zero, clerical salaries for increased hours for part-time staff at the library to attend monthly staff meetings, staff development days, and the annual Massachusetts Library Association Conference.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Finance committee recommendation?
Finance committee unanimously supports this article.
Ms. Julius, for discussion if any.
No, I think it speaks for itself.
Any further discussion on Article seven as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article seven, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Article seven passed by majority. Article eight, is Mr. Kylie here? Facilities director.
Article eight, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of nineteen thousand, thirty-one dollars and forty-one cents from account one, zero, five, three, five, three nine, five, three, five, nine oh, free cash to account one, one, nine, one, five, two oh, five, four, one, one, heating, oil, and gas. This is to pay a prior year bill from NRC, NRG, which is our natural gas supplier.
Finance committee recommendation?
Finance committee approved this unanimously.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Kylie, for discussion if any.
Last year, we had one account that was read incorrectly. The meter had been replaced and the supplier was reading it incorrectly. They corrected it, and we had a new balance.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article eight as presented? Seeing none, this will require a nine-tenths vote. So if, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Article nine, Mr. Sheedy, select board.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum, of the sum of three thousand dollars for police details for the Christmas parade to account number one, six three one, five two zero, five one six nine.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Finance committee recommendation?
Finance committee unanimously approves this article.
Mr. Sheedy, for discussion if any.
We only appropriate five thousand dollars for the police detail for the Christmas parade, and it's now running eight thousand dollars, so this is to make up the difference.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article nine as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article nine, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Article nine passes by majority. Article twen, uh, Article, Article ten, Mr. Spagon, select board.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of eighty-three dollars and two cents from account one, zero, three, five, nine...
Three, five, nine, zero, free cash to account one, one, five, 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 two, zero, five, five, nine, five, town hall computers to pay a prior year bill from Connection Public Sector Solutions.
I have a motion, I have a second. Motion made seconded. Finance committee recommendation?
Unanimously approves this article.
Mrs. Spagon, for discussion if any.
Nope, they owe eighty-three dollars and two cents.
Any further discussion on Article ten as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article ten, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Article eleven, Chief Jenkins. Is that different than my, are you presenting this?
I thought I was, but...
Oh, you are?
Chief, you're here, you go ahead.
All right, you want it?
Go ahead.
I'm a little stuffed up, you can do what you want.
Get it?
No, I'll do it for you. Chief Jenkins.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from account number eight, zero, dash, one, two, two, three, six, oh, four, dash, four, six, eight, oh, opioid stabilization fund to account number zero, one, two, ten, five, twenty, five, seven, three, one, dues, memberships, conferences, the sum of one thousand dollars to cover Plymouth County Outreach annual dues, or take any other action thereon.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Finance committee recommendation?
Finance committee unanimously recommends this article.
Chief, for discussion if any.
It's just for the annual dues that every community of Plymouth County pays to Plymouth County Outreach for their support in, you know, the fight against opioids.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article eleven as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article eleven, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes by two-thirds. Ms. Julius, now you're up.
Thank you. I move that the town vote to transfer fifty thousand dollars from account one, zero, three, five, nine, three, five, nine, zero, free cash to account one, one, two, two, six, nine, five, five, three, one, eight, to cover medical expenses covered under Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-One, Sections one hundred or one hundred B.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Finance committee recommendation?
Finance committee unanimously supports this article.
Ms. Julius, for discussion if any.
I would defer to the town administrator on this one, if there are any questions.
All right. Any further discussion on Article twelve as presented? Seeing none, uh, somebody gonna... Your kids just... Charlie, can you just play with the money for... You gotta come down, he's gonna speak.
It's to pay medical expenses for a retiree. That's all. We're obligated to do that, for police and fire.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of Article twelve as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Article twelve passes by majority. Mr. Sheedy, Article thirteen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of forty-two thousand dollars from account number one, zero, three, five, nine, three, five, nine, zero, free cash to account number one, one, nine, one, six, zero, two, one, five, two, four, one, maintenance of building and grounds to pay for netting at Strong Field.
I have a motion, I have a second. Motion made seconded. Finance committee.
Finance committee unanimously disapproves of this article.
Capital committee.
Capital committee approved this article, two to one.
Thank you. Mr. Sheedy, for discussion if any.
If there's any discussion, I'll defer it out to John Shea, recreation commission.
Yeah, Mr. Shea.
So, the town has been...
Excuse me, John, just introduce yourself.
Oh, John Shea, 143 Pond Street. The town has been receiving many complaints about foul balls at Strong's Field from the neighbors, broken windows in homes, cars, and neighbors almost being hit by foul balls. So we took, we took a look at what we could do at Strong's Field, if there was anything we could do to help improve the safety of the neighborhood. This proposal is to move the current backstop at Strong's Field, which is currently sixty feet behind home plate, move it up thirty feet forward, and install a six-foot overhang. In addition, this article is also proposing to install additional netting along the third base side. We looked at a couple different solutions, and we feel as though the one being proposed is the most viable and cost-effective.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article thirteen as presented? Mr. Walsh.
John, I'm just wondering, how many broken windows and windshields and stuff like that has there been? I'm only aware of one.
Well, so I've been taking care of the field now for about nine years. We had a broken window a couple years ago at a, at a home. We've had broken, a couple broken car windows over that time period. The houses have been hit numerous times. As far as reports of neighbors almost being hit by foul balls, I can only, from what the neighbors have told me, it's been a few times that the neighbors can't go out in their yards when games are being played because they're afraid of getting hurt.
Mr. Hamilton.
Yeah, Tom Hamilton, 930 Bridge Street. Does the Recreation Commission get a fee from people that use the fields?
So Strong's Field is, is used by the high school JV team, which it does not charge for. It's used by Little League, which uses the field for free. When the field is rented by outside groups, AAU teams, there's a couple organizations that run tournaments there on weekends, and yes, we do charge them.
Mr. Hamilton.
Just a second to that. Isn't that what the fees are fought for, maintenance of the fields?
That's what the fees are used for, maintenance of the field. Turf, pro slide, new bases, irrigation fixes, but something like this is a, is a capital project which is a little different than regular maintenance.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article thirteen as presented? Seeing none, all in favor of Article thirteen, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
We're gonna do a, we're gonna do a hand count. So, may tell us, can they come forward, please?
Keep your hands up till they come back, just so we make sure we get everybody. Keep your hands up just so they... Before we keep your hands up. Anybody up here gonna vote for, raise your hand, please? Everybody, wait. Everybody. I feel pressured. Yeah, it's like... I don't think it's gonna be... You want to have them raise their hands again? Everybody needs to session. Before, raise your hand. Thank you. You need better tellers. I see it, Doc. I call the phone, please. Keep your phone. Thank you so much. Bye. No. Sorry. Sorry. You should... 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 You should...
The motion does not pass 86 to 50. It does not pass. Mr. Riley, it's your show for the next few minutes from the Planning Board. Kevin Riley.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Excuse me. Respect to Article 14...
You gotta raise it up, we can't hear you.
With respect to Article 14, I moved at the town vote to amend zoning bylaws of the town of East Bridgewater by adding a new section, Section 16, MBTA Communities North, Single and Multifamily Overlay District, as is printed in the handout entitled STM 10724, amended articles, Articles 14, 15, and 18, and as shown on the screen.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion made seconded. You guys don't have this, right, David? Mr. Riley, for discussion, to get us...
Mr. Moderator, two things. Number one is, with respect to the Planning Board has conducted a public hearing on this matter on September 16th, 2024, and voted to recommend adoption of the proposed bylaw and the related map by a vote of five members in favor, two opposed. Secondly, I would like to propose, before too much discussion has had, I would like to propose an amendment to the text, if I might.
Yep. Is that what I have here? We have it? There's no amendments? There were amendments given out?
No.
Okay. A new amendment.
So, once so far as an amendment is concerned, Mr. Moderator, this would be to the very end of the bylaw, the proposed bylaw, Section J. We would add a new sentence to say, "Should this Section J be found to be invalid by any officer of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts or by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remainder of this bylaw shall likewise be considered as invalid."
I'm just gonna read it aloud to make sure I have it, Kevin. So, the amended, it's gonna be added to the... Yeah, it's gonna be Section J, and it says, "Should this Section J be found to be invalid by any officer of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts or by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remainder of this bylaw shall likewise be considered invalid." Correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. All right, discussion.
I'll turn it over to Mr. Gardener.
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, Town Council.
Town John.
I just wanted to ask a clarifying question. Was this amendment part of the public hearing?
It was not.
It was not?
It was not.
Who is offering this amendment, if I can ask?
I would ask, I would offer it as a private citizen, if necessary.
I'm gonna rule that this is...
Mr. Gardener can address that as well.
I'd like to further address that question. Mr. Gardener, if you can address what Mr. Clifford has raised.
Yes, specific to that question. I think the problem here is that during our public hearings on this article, it was explained to the board, as well as to the audience, as well as to the people in the town that were watching this live, that that provision was put in to cover the fact that the Citizens Planning Cooperative that put a seminar on for this suggested that if we wished to use more diverse housing than just large multifamily housing, we should zone more acres for use under this bylaw, and that we should add a provision that says, once we've reached our threshold number, that the bylaw goes into suspension until that threshold number is changed by the state. Now, since then, we've got an informal feedback from the Attorney General's Office that they don't like that last paragraph. So, we have a serious catch-22 problem here. We're considering zoning acreage, which allow up to 2,000 units. Under the statutes...
Please, please, let him go on. You have a chance to speak.
Under the statutes, depending on how you read the statutes, we need 510 to 520 units. If this paragraph is deleted, which came directly from the Department of Housing at the state level in that seminar, then we have a serious issue with this bylaw in its entirety. So, in my mind, we would be acting against what we discussed at our public hearing in great detail. We explained multiple times why that paragraph is in the bylaw, and what its protection is intended to do for the town of East Bridgewater. That paragraph needs to be amended to cover the fact that we've got an arbitrary decision from the Attorney General's Office. And the example that was given at the Citizens Planning Training Commission at that seminar is that language comes directly out of state law. And that language is the same language that exists in Chapter 40B, which is a state law. When you hit a threshold under the law, you're allowed to suspend applications under the law. That's where that language comes from, the state government itself.
Thank you. Wait a second, I just wanna... Mr. Clifford.
Mr. Moderator, I'm taking the position that this is beyond the scope of the article. And just for clarification to the voters that are here this evening, you know, we certainly understand that this is a controversial law that the Commonwealth has imposed on cities and towns, and we understand that people have strong opinions about it. But there is no mechanism for you to vote a bylaw with this kind of contingent agreement. And if the, what will happen if you choose to vote to approve this bylaw is the Attorney General will review it. The Attorney General, at this point, has offered an opinion that they don't believe that the sunset provision, that is the concern of the Planning Board, is illegal. But we will have the opportunity to fight that, to make that argument at the time, when they offer an opinion if the bylaw is passed. If they invalidate this, and the bylaw goes into effect without that provision, we can come back to a town meeting and repeal the zoning bylaw. So, it's this particular proposed amendment. I'm ruling that it's beyond the scope of the article, and that there's really no legal mechanism for such a motion.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Moderator, I'll take a specific exception to that in that we were advised back in 1987, when we adopted our ARPUD overlay bylaw, when we wanted to put in a sunset provision, that that provision was 100% legal under state law. And in fact, we have that sunset provision in our ARPUD bylaw. We're at almost identical to that, and it was approved by the Attorney General's Office. And our ARPUD bylaw is currently suspended right now because we have met our threshold. So, that was approved by the Attorney General's Office as perfectly in keeping with the intent of town meetings' rights to vote zoning bylaws.
Just one second, sir. So, procedurally, I have to... Mr. Riley, can you get up again? I have to, first of all, I have to take a vote to see if they can amend the article. So, we haven't, so what we have, he has made a motion to amend the article besides its context. So, we have to take a vote on whether or not he's allowed to amend the article. If this board decides he can, then we discuss the article. If he doesn't, we go back to the original article. So, I need to see if the town is willing to, first of all, let him amend their article. If you're gonna talk directly about the, not what the amendment says...
I'm talking about both.
All right, then let me, okay, tell me why they shouldn't amend the article, because that's what we gotta deal with first, before we get into the meat and potatoes of it.
Okay, 1 Pond Street. This has to do with the MBTA Communities law that was passed many years ago. The town itself does not have an MBTA station, therefore, it doesn't apply because you have to have buildings within a half a mile to that. It doesn't apply to East Bridgewater.
That's incorrect.
And if you take a look at the law, it says it's "if applicable." It has that clause in the law. Therefore, anything that says MBTA should be rejected from all standpoints. Whether you want to amend it or not, reject them all.
Stay there for a second. Let's do this first. So, they've made a motion to amend the article. They've had discussion. All in favor of the motion to amend the article, not voting on the article itself, just allowing to amend it. Mr. Hamilton, you gonna address that? I'd like to move on to the next section. You're gonna have a chance to talk about the whole thing.
Procedural issue, I don't think we've accepted that and seconded. So, doesn't that have to happen before he offers the amendment?
No, that's what, no, we're working on the motion to amend. Before we vote on this, what it says, we're voting on whether or not this board is gonna allow him to amend the article.
Right, but don't we have to vote on Article 14 as it's written now? Then get a second? Okay, you're not voting on amendment.
I'm trying to get a vote on whether or not this board will let them amend it first. Not the board's article, just whether or not you allow him to amend it.
Right, but don't we have to vote on Article 14?
That's what I'm trying to do.
It was seconded.
It was seconded?
Yes.
Okay, I missed that then.
I did say second.
That's all I was looking for.
I did say second, yeah.
All right.
All right, so, all we're voting on now is whether or not you're allowing the article to be amended, not on it's, not on what it says, but whether or not it can be amended.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Flaherty.
My name is Richard O'Flaherty. I reside at 31 Hobart Street, town here. Just a point of clarification to the previous speaker, not Mr. Hamilton, and I didn't catch his name, but what he's saying is partially incorrect. East Bridgewater is an adjacent community, and it's a part of the 177 communities in the state of Massachusetts that follows under this law. Even though we don't have a rail station, a bus station, or a subway station, within the parameters, we are still obligated to address this, whether it's approved or disapproved. So, I just wanted to point that out as a matter of clarification.
Thank you. All right, so, what we're gonna vote on, it's very simple. We're gonna vote on whether or not the proponent of the motion can amend his article. Nothing else. If it's allowed to be amended, we will discuss the article as amended. If it's not allowed, we go back to the main article. All in favor of letting the proponent amend their article, say aye. The motion, say aye. Opposed? So, your amendment fails. So, now, we go back to the main article, which is what you have. Any further, any further... Mr. Riley? Mr. Gardner? Oh, we have the presentation?
Yeah, we're gonna run through a quick presentation to give us some background of housing in the town of East Bridgewater. Can we shrink that a little? One more. Okay, yes, so, as we've already heard, this is what technically speaking is really Chapter 40A, Section 3A of the state zoning bylaw. And it's referred to, in its context, as the MBTA zoning bylaw. The next 12 or 13 slides are gonna be the background information of what we have here in East Bridgewater. This chart on the screen right now shows the single-family housing cost in the United States starting in 2020, I'm sorry, 2090, 1990, sorry, and it goes up to 2023. The median cost of single-family housing in the United States has gone up by a factor of eight over that time period. In the town of East Bridgewater, and in the state of Massachusetts, the cost of that housing has gone up by a factor of 11.4, nearly double the nationwide average. This chart also shows that heavy green line or blue line that's at that screen is Massachusetts. We're number one in the United States in terms of the cost of single-family housing by a pretty big amount, and that includes New York, Washington DC, California, and Hawaii. One of the requirements, one of the restrictions in the MBTA zoning bylaw is that the zoning bylaw reserves the right to not process grant applications for what's called discretionary grants. In the town of East Bridgewater, those discretionary grants over the last three years have been a number approaching $2 million. If we could show the bottom of that screen. All of the grants on this list, we would potentially be prohibited from applying for, as they're all considered discretionary grants under state law. So, here's some more information in terms of the housing units in the community and how bad off we are. 84% of the residential units in the town of East Bridgewater are single-family. 4% of the residential units are multifamily condos. So, that's 88% of the households in the town of East Bridgewater are owner-occupied. Less than 88% are multifamily rental units. Median price for a single-family house is now over $500,000. Currently, we have virtually no available rental housing. The average rental prices for the few rental units that we have in town is over $2,000 per month. We have what is effectively a monolithic housing stock with no diversity. For some financial numbers, a home with a $500,000 cost requires a $50,000 down payment under current conventional mortgages. A conventional mortgage of $450,000, 30-year fixed, means monthly principal and interest of $3,000. And that doesn't attempt to add the cost of taxes in, which would be in the number that a bank evaluates. Based on the 28% rule, again, not including taxes, income needed would be $128,000 per year per household. As rental numbers go in the current rental market, $2,000 per month rental is $24,000 annually. Based on the 28% rule, income needed would be $86,000 per year per household. East Bridgewater housing household size, we have a population of 14,382. We have 5,172 households in town. We have an actual census headcount of residents per household at 2.78. And the East Bridgewater schools, the headcount. We have 2,008 students. We have 5,172 households. That leaves an average of students per household of 0.39. In the MBT North area, the wastewater treatment facility would be handled through the intermunicipal agreement we have signed with the city of Brockton for what currently stands at 75,000 gallons per day of wastewater flow. Physical construction of this system is currently scheduled to start in the fall of 2024. All right, we can go next. In the downtown, the proposed downtown district, the wastewater treatment availability would come from the East Bridgewater's current municipal wastewater treatment, which is located behind Town Hall. Current capacity of this plant is configured as 30,000 gallons per day. Multiple town buildings are already connected to this facility, multiple commercial sites. CVS, Subway, DuHurst, Lumber, and Carriage Crossing are also connected to this facility. The facility is currently readily expandable to 60,000 gallons a day by adding a second package treatment unit, and the existing building is already sized to accept... And the existing building is already sized to accept that unit. Further expansion of the site could potentially be accomplished by replacing the existing equipment with a larger, more advanced treatment system. The discharge site off of Central Street uses ground discharge injection and potentially has a capacity to handle approximately 100,000, 20,000 gallons per day. The initial funding for this project, the downtown system, was part of the high school, middle school project. Individual private connections would pay the full cost of their installation plus an ongoing fee for usage. Water supply in East Bridgewater has more than adequate water supply sourced from five groundwater wells. Actual usage restrictions, odd even day usage limitations are based on state requirements for long-term protection of our groundwater system. We are not short of water. In case of unexpected need for water, East Bridgewater has a current emergency connection with the city of Brockton. The physical connection, water main valves meter is located near the town-city border on Thatcher Street. The city of Brockton has a virtual unlimited water supply as this time as they have pursuant to state regulations to keep their desalination plant available for many years. So this chart shows the growth of the town of East Bridgewater, starting just prior to World War II, all the way down to 2021. And these are all audited numbers. Population went from 3,832 with 3.2 people per unit all the way down to the 2023 estimated numbers of 14,612 with a population per unit expected to be 2.80. Again, in the, in the last two columns, the number of students as of today are 2,008, which is a headcount of 0.39 students per housing unit. This picture is, is a development which most people in town have probably seen multiple times. And these are the size buildings that could potentially be built under the proposed zoning bylaw. They're 12-unit buildings on 35,000 square feet. Specifically, these are the four buildings in the complex known as the Turnet River Bend, which is right at 106 and East Street in West Bridgewater, adjacent to the golf course. A single unit within that development would look like this building. That's a 12-unit building on a 35,000 square foot lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner. Ms. Dean.
I just wanted to add one thing. The grant listing that we had, that provides the grants that we've currently received in the last two years as well as year-to-date. We have a current $4 million grant outstanding with Mass Works for the sewer project on North Bedford Street. And it's been explicitly stated by the state that Mass Works funds would be pulled from towns that were not in compliance. So that's a big number, the $4 million for the grant that we're looking at. That would more than double what we currently plan on borrowing for that project.
Thank you. Mr. Riley.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator, just for purposes of clarification, I just want folks to be aware that by state law, East Bridgewater is considered, under the MBTA zoning act, it is considered an adjacent community. Although there are no train, bus, or other stations in the town of East Bridgewater, we are adjacent to communities in which those facilities are located. Every town surrounding us actually has such a facility. So we are required by the law to adopt by right higher-density development of single-family housing by the end of this year. And to the extent that we do not do that, we run the risk of losing those grants, which Mr. Gardner and Mrs. Dean have just described. So basically, East Bridgewater is required to provide an ability for the development of approximately 525 units under the way that the law would be calculated. And what this bylaw does is it simply gives developers, private developers, an ability to develop more creative forms of housing stock to meet, A, the demand for housing stock, and to make it available to more people in this community where they may perhaps have been priced out according to, you know, the statistics and the numbers that Mr. Gardner has just shown you. So this is not something, if this bylaw is adopted, this does not mean that the day after tomorrow, something will be happening. It means that it could, if it was attractive to a private developer. And again, there are limitations in this bylaw so that if the, the entire Section 3A, which is now in litigation before the Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court, if that is invalidated, this bylaw falls by the wayside as well. So I just want to make those things clear.
Before, before you go, just clarification, because this is, and I follow the Milton thing. So all this is going to do, and town council can let the people know, all this is going to do, if it passes, it says you are required to have a plan, X number, correct?
Correct.
It doesn't mean they're going to be built.
Correct.
It doesn't mean you have to have a plan that the town's approved for, whatever, I think you said 525, is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay. Just want, because I see that in the paper, and I can show other people see it too.
So not, not to skip ahead, but just for example, with respect to Article 15, which is the downtown, before anything would ever happen there, that's a site that would have to be cleaned up by virtue of state and federal involvement, would have to attract, you know, that's, that's the first and foremost. Then, secondly, you would have to attract a private developer who would be interested in developing that land in a certain way. And all this, this would do would be to give that developer an opportunity to do that in a more creative way than what it is, you know, how it is presently zoned.
I think. So can you identify yourself again? I missed your name. Identify yourself again and your address.
Okay, Bourne, Bourne Street. I'd like to clarify a couple of things. Everybody keeps talking about the high cost of housing. It's everywhere because of the loss of purchasing power of the dollar. Simple. I don't care if you go to the next town over, everywhere's expensive. Get used to it. So, back to the MBTA community law. If you read Section 18, Section, yeah, subsection 18, Section 3A, 2, be located not more than half a mile from any commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal, or bus station if applicable. That's the exact language from the law. So when somebody says, oh, you have to have it in the town, if you read the law, it's very clear that the town does not apply because we don't have an MBTA station, nor do we want one. Okay? If you refuse to comply, as a lot of people are trying to lead to, and you're worried about losing funds, there's three sections of state funds that are involved. One is Housing Choice Initiative, which pays for the stack 'em and pack 'em. So you don't get to build what we don't want. So, big deal if you lose that. The next one is Local Capital Project Funds, which they were talking about putting in the soil lines and the main drag, which is only going to open up more properties for the same issue that we don't want. So if you lose the funds on that, there's no way they can build these projects, especially the one down on 18, which is all wetland. And I'd like to know why the Conservation Commission hasn't stepped in because that land is mostly wetland. That's why they need to, you know, railroad pass that. And the thing that the ZBA is dealing with right now, if you look at those criterias that they're looking to overrule, wetland is number one. And the ZBA doesn't have the authority to overrule state law because wetlands fall under state law. You have to have the Conservation Commission involved, which nobody seems to be looking at that. So you got wetland there. Across from the post office is contaminated soil. You're going to put housing on contaminated soil? Good luck with that. And then who's going to get the bill? The town going to get the bill to clean that up? Once again, somebody's putting these proposals forward, which is really, nobody's thinking long-term. And lastly, for one other thing that the state would cut funds is Mass Works Infrastructure Program, which is again, large-scale community housing, which we don't want. So if you lose those funding from the state, so what? It doesn't faze us. Okay, thank you.
Any, Mr. Whitefeller.
Isn't it wonderful that we live in a state that will come into a town and say, if you don't do this, you're not getting this? When Prop 2 and 1/2 came in, how many years ago? 50 years ago, 40 years ago? The idea was a town could only raise so much money a year. They have found, the state has found a way to circumvent Prop 2 and 1/2 every single year since then. They've done it with the schools. They've done it with libraries. They've done it with grants. They're not giving you any money. You're paying for it. Take a look and see what lottery distribution has done. It was for the cities and towns, period. I talked to someone that worked for the lottery not too long ago. Cities and towns drew about 30% of what they should be getting. The state says no. Tell the state, in my estimation, go to hell.
Any, any further discussion? Mr. Flaherty.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, Rich O'Flaherty again, 31 Hobart Street here in town. I've lived here for 37 years. And I know we all have differences, and we like to see different ways of how the community is going to grow. Now, in the 37 years that I've lived here, I served on the planning board, East Bridgewater, from the mid-'90s up until the early 2000s. Up until 2019, I was on the Oak Island Planning Council as a delegate representing the city, as well as on the JTC Committee. I am what you would call a smart-growth proponent, which means, you know, growth that happens, maybe not today, but there's a plan for sometime in the future to grow the community in a way that enhances the value of the community. And in my opinion, value starts with people who are in this room, who make up the community. That's where your value is. I was welcomed here 37 years ago by the town of East Bridgewater. I came from another community. And I would venture to say that many of you in here came from a different community, and you were welcomed. You chose to live here for a couple of different reasons, I would imagine. Probably the school. The school system is probably second to none. They have a high graduation rate, kids going on to college. The athletics, the youth programs, whether it's soccer, football, lacrosse, basketball, Cub Scouts, there are opportunities for your kids to grow. So I know I may, I'm probably in the minority here in proposing, you know, moving this bylaw forward just to enhance something in the future. And that's what I look at. We're all welcomed here, why leave somebody out? If you have a son and daughter that lives in East Bridgewater right now and would like to stay here, and they're just getting out of college, or they're looking, are they military and they're looking to become a firefighter, a police officer, an EMT, a nurse, or a doctor, they're priced out of the market. So, you know, when somebody says, well, you know, that's too bad, deal with it. It's, it's, to me, it's inconscionable. Everybody has a right to their opinion. I know, I, I've, I live where I live, and I'm kind of fortunate, but I'd like to move sometime, and I'd like to stay in East Bridgewater, but I know I can't afford it. The average home, the average sales price in a home in East Bridgewater is $585,000. And you go into any developments, you know, where new houses are being built, they're up over $700,000. And there aren't many people that I know of that can afford it. The median income in East Bridgewater is $122,000. Good luck trying to make a mortgage payment. And you may be hard-pressed, you know, making a rent payment. Thank you.
Thank you. You're up next, Sir Lojic. You're up next. Introduce yourself and your address, please.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. My name is David Finley. I live on Willow Avenue. I've been a resident for 44 years here. I've got some, I've got, I've got two or three questions.
Can you, can you pick the mic up a little bit?
I have two or three questions to ask you. Today, the Attorney General of Massachusetts took to court the town of Milton for this very same question that's being answered or talked about tonight. If the people here tonight vote no, what does the management of this town do? That's the first question. Has the land been purchased by a developer and a contractor already? No idea. How many families are going to be moving into the town of East Bridgewater? And that percentage, how many are low-income? How many will be renting because they don't pay property taxes? The people here do, and they will be financing them. So you can see an increase in schools, bus service. I've been told the water department is okay for water. Do we add another fire station? Do we add another ambulance station? Who knows? You're building a new town next to Whitman. No spawn development. So the question is, what's the town management going to do tonight if this people in this audience votes against these two developments? And how many families, not developments, not houses, how many families are coming to this town?
No, no, you, you up, you're up.
Okay, thank you. Hester Reed, West Street. Just a couple of notes I've, I've written down. I don't believe I've heard anybody state that there will be guarantees that the vacancies, the vacant homes and the vacant apartments will actually go to the local residents. I also haven't heard any guarantees that these additional housing units will actually lower the cost of the, the average price of a home in Massachusetts or in East Bridgewater, or lower the cost of rent in the, in the state of Massachusetts or in the town of East Bridgewater. And I think that moving forward with the possibility of having such enormous growth in such a small town is quite reckless, in my opinion, if the state doesn't first stop large corporations from buying up available housing.
I'm sorry, yeah, I was going to ask you, I didn't know if you, if you had the answer, I don't, if anyone has an answer on that.
So I, I can, I can attempt to answer most of those questions. Number one, there is no developer that currently owns the land, with the exception of the 40B project that's already proposed and is not part of this. There is no individual developer that owns the land. Number two, the way this works is, this is a zoning change. Some developer still has to come in, decide he's got a viable piece of land to develop, and propose that development through the standard process within the community. This is open-market, private development. There's no guarantees of who can buy the house. They're, they're sold on the open market. Anyone can buy them at, at the price given. The value of the homes in terms of actual cost should be significantly less than the current cost. A simple example of that, based on the first line in the table in the bylaw, is that currently a single-family home has to be on what is known as a builder's acre of land. That's where the majority of the house cost at the beginning comes from. A house lot in East Bridgewater today is $300,000. Our proposal under the MBTA zoning bylaw that we're putting on the table here is to allow four single-family homes on 10,000 square foot lots each.
Excuse me, let him finish, please. You have your chance.
That still is lots bigger than we currently have in Robinwood and in several other locations in town. Those houses would have an embedded lot cost of somewhere in the range of $60,000 to $75,000. That should dramatically lower the market price of the houses being sold and still afford the developer a similar profit margin to what he needs to get when he sells single-family homes in the town. The second question has been The second question has been asked and answered multiple times, but we'll do it again. The total number of housing units in East Bridgewater is over 500,000, I'm sorry, 5,000. The proposed amount of development units in these two zoning districts is 500. That's less than 10% of the town housing units as we currently know it. That development would happen based on extrapolations of standard private development over a period of from five to 20 years. That's not out-of-control growth by any stretch of the imagination. The student count is expected to be somewhere between .3 and .5 students per housing unit. That's a 40-year trend in the town of East Bridgewater, and that count has actually been going down as the number of housing units go up. That would mean the number of students to be expected in the community new over that same 20-year time period would, would expect to raise from, from a small number at the beginning to up to a number of 250 to 300 students during that entire 20-year period. The police department and the fire department have already spoken several times at another hearing and said that the amount of development that's being proposed for the, for these items, including the Chapter 40B, would not impact the physical size of the police station or the fire station, and it would, would not impact the total number of officers needed in either one of the public safety departments at this time. And they may need to slowly up their head count as the development gets built out. Again, which is expected to be somewhere between five and 20 years from now. And I, for one, will add, as a private citizen, I would like somewhere for our children and our grandchildren to live in our town.
Thank you.
Sir? Jerry Adams, 202 Sherwood Circle. A lot of what Mr., Mr. Gardner just said is fluff, okay? I know we're here right now for the zoning of, to change the zoning for the MBTA. Does anyone have the picture of the outline of what that's going to be? Do you have a slide for that, that you showed us at the last meeting? Yeah. Look at the houses on Spring Street. I made a comment last time, are they going to be taken by eminent domain? And I was told, probably eventually. So people live on that street, they're going to look for egress to get out. All right? I know we're just changing supposedly the bylaw. Once, once we change the zoning, we lose, the whole situation's going to change. No one in their right mind is going to come here and try to build because of the superfund site. The government's going to come in and mandate, just like they're trying to do with our grants and everything else, and they're going to mandate what they do there. All right? So we're going to lose our autonomy. What you did say about the police department, the fire department, and the water department, that was for the, the one going up near Peaceful Meadows. This one was never discussed at any of those meetings. So there's a lot of questions. Oh, last time they did the time study for the, or the travel study, or the traffic study was done in COVID. Where's, where's, where's the results for the new one, for that? So all the traffic that's going to come, be generated from this new project is going to make this town almost unlivable. It's ridiculous. So my, in my opinion, this is foolish.
Yeah, just one last thing, Mr. Moderator, just so that people vote on the basis of information and not misinformation. Previous speaker spoke to the idea that, he referenced a, a portion of the, the state law, which talks about less than or not more than 0.5 miles from a commuter rail station, and so forth and so on. What that refers to is that if a community actually has such a facility, that would be where it would, the district that would be created would want to be located. An MBTA community is defined in another entirely, in a different section of Massachusetts general laws. It's in Section 1 of General Laws, Chapter 161A, and it is, it speaks to a served community, so-called, which is one, a community that abuts a city or town that hosts MBTA service. So just for purposes of making sure that everybody understands, East Bridgewater is under this mandate, East Bridgewater is an adjacent or a served community under the terms of Massachusetts general laws, and this hopes to help the, the overall housing.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Dan O'Rourke, I live on Washington Street. Reading the news today, Milton, when put to vote, 54% of their residents were against this very same type of proposal. I would venture to guess that if you did that in this town, you would get similar, if not higher, results. I, for one, take offense that somebody that doesn't live in this town can bully us and threaten us with loss of grants, which they're doing to Milton, right? They don't live in this town, it doesn't affect them, it affects us. Okay? I don't know about anybody else, but I pay a lot of tax money. Some of this grant loss, maybe we ought to take a look at where our taxes are going. I moved here 26 years ago because I was willing to drive a little farther, commute a little longer, because I like a quiet rural living. And I think a lot of people here do as well. What about our rights?
I'm going to let these last three speakers speak, and then we'll, you want, you guys speak, come down if you guys speak. I can't acknowledge by, I'll let you, you will let, you were fir, you were first. You beat Jim up, he's a little slower.
Reed, West Street. I just wanted to bring up, since people are checking out the news lately, if anybody has taken a peek at what's been happening in Brunswick, Maine. Small community, 20,000 people there. They just built a beautiful 60-unit apartment complex. Can anybody guess how many of their sons and daughters in that community have been able to move into that beautiful complex? Zero, zero. It was a private builder, but they still came in, and they're giving everybody in there free rent, free utilities for two years, or until they find a job, and then even then an enormous percentage of their bills will be subsidized by the community. And it doesn't matter what type of builder it is, the state can still do whatever they want.
Mr. Whitefella.
Mr. Moderator, I have intimate knowledge, I guess would be a word, of what's going on in this market. I am very familiar with an individual who is working for one of the largest developers in the country. That developer right now is bankrupt. That developer now just lost its owner, died. No one knows who's taking over the hundred-or-so projects that are currently started in towns. No one's doing anything with them, they're not going anyplace, they're a blight on the towns that it's in. They're willing to give some of these things away. We've all watched South Weymouth, the former airbase, that's been going on now almost 20 years. Route 18 has been modified so it no more looks like Route 18 than the Mass Pike does. And if you've driven up there lately, you feel like you're on the Mass Pike. South Weymouth currently has, or is on, its fourth developer, and they don't know when it's going to be done. They've still got half of it that is vacant. But even more important to us, Mr. Gardner, I think, suggested, or someone from the planning board, that they could put four single-family houses on a 10,000-square-foot lot. Think about that, folks.
All right, we'll correct in a second, I know, I know it's not.
Yeah, it is what you said.
No, excuse me, you, I'm going to give you a chance to clear up, because I, I didn't hear you say that either, I'm going to give you a chance to clear up. Go ahead, Mr. Whitefella.
Most of you live on three-quarter-acre lot minimum that were built in the town since the '50s. I've seen septic systems, one across the street from us went in on an acre lot. It took up this new buyer's entire front yard. You can't put second houses on a 10,000-square-foot or a three-quarter-acre lot. I wanted to put a shed up when we first moved here, by the way, I haven't heard anybody more than me in 50 years. You can't put an additional housing unit on a three-quarter-acre lot and retain the look, the quality of the town. I think most of us here, there's no natives here, but the majority of us here moved here for the quality of life. You're going to change that with what you're doing. You've got 300-some-odd kids that are going to be going to schools. The high school, this building we're in now, the school department came to us a month after the building was open, saying they were out of space. Where are we going to go from there? They're already talking about an elementary school, they're talking about replacing the Mitchell School. Taxes in this town right now are ridiculous for what we get for service. So be careful.
Mr. Nelson, excuse me, Mr. Nelson, do you want to clarify what you said, Mr. Gardner? I didn't hear it the way it was presented, but do you want to clarify?
Yeah, the, the statement that he just made was, was 100% incorrect. What I stated was that we could put single-family houses on 10,000-square-foot lots, and therefore get four housing units on an acre, instead of one housing unit on an acre. That's exactly what I said.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Please. We can, we can be disagreeable, we have to do it civilly. The speakers get a chance to speak, if you can't yell from your seat. Mr. Nelson.
Mr. Moderator, Don Nelson, Stonebridge Way, East Bridgewater. I have a couple of things for someone to stand up here tonight and say that our water is fine. Our water department is not fine. We have a tank up on Highland Street. If anybody's been by it, it's in deplorable shape. And the fact of it is, that used to have enough water in it for two and a half days. It just barely makes one day now. And it's going to cost a minimum of $5 million to replace it. Best guess. This whole thing about, do we need, can we amend the article or not, there's too many unanswered questions for this to be voted tonight. I vote, we vote it down, this one and the next one that's on the agenda, turn them both down, and move on to the other articles that we can deal with that we know something about. Because this is obviously, since of the audience, it's not going to pass anyways.
Just a clarification. These three speakers and that young lady there are going to be the last speaker of the day, and we're going to, we're going to go to a vote. Yeah, at the end. Go ahead, you're up.
Nancy DeChambeau, 448 Bevford Street. The bigger picture of this is 15-minute cities is what they want to turn us all into. And that's the end game. If you read all through the paperwork, and it's, all this is, it's, it's just a money grab. That's all this is. And greed throws all common sense out the window, because this makes no common sense for a town of our size when you can't even drive down Route 18 right now, or get through the lights, or that new stop area up near Batty's Garage, which is a total mess. And if we keep adding and adding, we're going to be a parking lot, which is what the 15-minute cities are all about, because you want to take our cars away and have Bat buses come in from Brockton, and that's the bigger plan here. Let's face it. If you read all the paperwork, that's what it is. 15-minute cities.
Thank you.
Kim Sheehan, 35 Meadowbrook Drive. My question is, I think it's ironic that today of all days we're taking a vote. What's happening today? The state took the town of Milton to court today, to the Supreme Court, about them fighting it. Wouldn't it behoove us to postpone this meeting to see what happens with that? Because this could be all null and void if, if we wait.
No, we're here tonight to vote on it, and you have no idea when that decision could come out.
I just think we need more information.
No, I understand, I understand it, but the reality is, we, we, everyone came up tonight to vote one way or the other here, and so I think we should move forward with that decision, one way or the other. Yep?
Yeah, my name is Marilyn Smollett, 745 Bridge Street. I just came from a planning board meeting prior to this meeting here tonight, and there was no mention of any amendment change at all. I'd like to question also the validity of some of these statistics that are being thrown at us, because I, I can only assume that they're probably coming from the governor's office, and I will never vote for anything that an elected official, official supports when they use blackmail and offering us things that we didn't have before in order to get what they want. We need to be smart about this.
Identify yourself and your address, please.
Kathleen Lynch, 170 West Union Street. Thanks for calling me a young lady, I've lived here since 1989, appreciate it. I just have some very specific questions related to if we approve the rezoning. So if we approve, and I don't really understand civics and government big picture, but I'm trying, so if we approve the rezoning, what controls do we have as a town in terms of what development happens?
All right. So if it's approved, what, what, what control of the development?
Yes, if the zoning is approved, what control do we have? Oh, you got.
Mr. Gardner, can you answer that?
Yes, I, I think it becomes part of the standard bylaw, and developer still has to go through the entire process with his project, which means Conservation Commission, Planning Board. Planning Board would handle site plan approvals, Planning Board would handle special permits, if any. Planning Board would handle subdivision control, which makes sure that all of the development is done according to the zoning bylaw, and that all the roads constructed meet current standards for high-quality roads.
Does that include the towns' votes, those of us that don't, aren't on those boards?
No, there's public hearings, which the public can go to, those public hearings and, and voice their opinion of the project that's before us, like we always have done.
Thank you. Second question, specific to the downtown project. Have there been any, I know we're not voting on a specific project, but as it relates to the rezoning of that parcel, have we, has any environmental studies been put forth specifically related to moving that soil? Because if you live in that neighborhood, you know that that soil does not perk, meaning the water, it's harder for water to, contaminants to go down, it doesn't perk. So I'd love to see studies that say it's best to leave it alone because it doesn't perk, or perhaps it's better to clean it. I'm not an expert, I'd love to see studies before I vote on rezoning that development. So have those, has any recent environmental, environmental studies been put forth before we even consider rezoning that specific parcel?
I, I can say there's been at least three environmental studies done in that site over the last 40 years since I've been in town on the planning board. And that's why we can't build anything there at this time. That's why, one of the reasons why we're trying to rezone the parcel. Because both the state and the federal government have clearly indicated that if there's a proposal before us with a private developer who wants to put housing, high-quality, high, high-count housing in that area, that they're willing to consider state funding for grants and federal funding for grants if that were to be used for cleanup of that property prior to a development being done.
Thank you. I think I just, I was just wondering if we've seen, like, similar EPA superfund sites that had been cleaned up in different communities, and the effect, if, if it was a good or a bad thing?
There's dozens of those in Fall River and New Bedford that have already been done, cleaned up, and are now housing complexes.
Okay. Just because, you know, we all know the environmental impact. Just because, you know, we all know the environmental impact and what's happened to many residents that live in that footprint of the town. So it's imperative that we look, dig deep. I was personally affected, my family, we think, and I know that there's been studies, and the late Kathleen Tean did many, many studies. It's personal for a lot of us in town. So it's imperative that we look at the cause and effect of that work in that land. And then my last question is, the wastewater treatment facility at the high school that would service the downtown, specific downtown development, has that, are there bylaws in place that allow for residential to tap into the high school wastewater treatment facility? I thought it was only commercial. Would this be considered commercial, even though it serves residential?
I don't believe there's any bylaws that allows residential to tap in.
So I think the important thing to hear is that the state permit created that as a municipal wastewater treatment plant, which is owned and governed by the town's own guidelines. There is no state restrictions at that level. They're the ones who approve that through the DEP. It's up to the town to decide where that line can be run, and it's up to the town to decide how much cost is going to be paid by the developers, which under state law, private development requires 100% payment.
But the town approved it, right? The town approved it initially when it was developed. When that was voted upon, was it based on only commercial or mixed use?
It was intended to provide wastewater treatment to the whole downtown area. And the intent, the intent was to allow, what was still and today is allowed under zoning, is residential housing on the second floor of all those buildings in downtown, which can't be done right now because they can't expand the Title V septic systems that they have.
Okay, thank you. I really know it's important to increase the commercial tax base in town. I just want to make sure we do it environmentally, we're responsible about that downtown project. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Spagon.
Yeah, I'll be very brief, because I've talked about these projects and not the zoning. But I want to make sure we all understand, this isn't about building anything right now, it's about just zoning, right? So we understand that MBTA communities is just about the zoning of those areas. That's why the planning board is putting this in front of you. I don't want to see or get anyone confused in the room that this has anything to do with the 40B Meadowbrook down on Route 18. Two completely different issues. Now, to look at Meadowbrook quickly and what was going on there, you know, this was something that was proposed and looked at through the city of Brockton, working with them, not just for the Meadowbrook area, but throughout that whole district, which we redistricted a few years ago here at town meeting. The new warehousing and then other projects that would be looking to propose would be potentially going across the street to the old Compass Medical Building, Hard Hanks Building, I guess it's Signature now, if they wanted to tie into the system in order to generate more money for the town of East Bridgewater. Now, look, I've said this a million times, and I'll say it again, all we do up here is we put propositions in front of the body, like you are here. Not once since I've been on this board, and I'm sure it's the same with Carol and David, have we ever proposed something and then passed it without a meeting, without the general body coming here, you know? So for comments like, "I don't trust you," "you kickbacks," "you're doing, you know, backdoor deals," it's ridiculous. It's absolutely ridiculous. Been on the board four and a half years, I was with the, with the, poor to hell for, this is how old I am, another 20 years. Been servicing the town of East Bridgewater the best way I could. And I think most of the people that know me in this room know that what we try to do, and what this board tries to do, and me in particular, is just give opportunities. I had two public hearings, I went to at least seven different public hearings between the school committee, the Capitol, every board. I went to all of them and explained exactly what the purpose was. I had a public hearing, I got eight people in the room. I looked today, I generated at least 17 to 20 different posts on social media that I know a lot of people in this room love, think it's great. And we got seven people. But what we did do is we went to a town meeting, and we had a vote, and they gave us the permission to move forward this project with the ability to hopefully generate more commercial as well as residential. You know, and of that $11 million that was granted to us, we got back the hard work of the board here, and then the group that I had working with me, another $7 million in grants. And I said that while I sat up here, that we do everything we could to keep this as low as possible, at the same time generating money, because we get money from everybody that participates on that district, in that line. That's exactly how it's done. We've done nothing illegal, we've done nothing sneaky. We've proposed it, and that's all we did. But I wanted to make sure that when you leave the room, because I'm sure I'll see seven different posts how big of a jerk I am, which is fine, but I want to make sure you're clear that the 40B is completely different than what the zoning is. And we'll continue to have talks with the zoning board on what the body wants to do, and I'm sure they'll listen to you, and we'll move forward. But we always propose to the public the opportunity to either accept or deny it. That's it. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, we're now going to vote.
Can I ask a question?
You can ask one question because you're sitting here, Mr. Walsh. Make it quick, please.
Peter, you mentioned that the $7 million for the sewer project downtown district that we got is great. My understanding is that would be...
Dave, if you can't, they can't hear you.
That the $7 million that we got for the sewer district, is that in flux if we don't do this? And if it is in flux, we're already under contract, so the town would have to absorb that $7 million?
So $4 million of it was from the state of Massachusetts through the One Stop Grant, which, you know, could it be, maybe? You know, I can tell you this, we are working on that property as a friendly 40B, meaning that we're working with other communities to also enhance the area for not just the residential that we've got, but also the commercial properties. But more importantly, we're opening up 33 acres of town-owned land that we could never get to. Got an easement in order to get through a couple of different areas to that. What do we do with that? Well, it's, again, that's up to the body. We do recreational area out there, I don't know. But yes, I mean, could it be, maybe? I can't answer that question. I don't know anything about zoning. I know nothing. I don't sit on the planning board, I don't sit on the zoning board. But, you know, the other three was a grant that we were appropriated by the federal government, so the $3 million grant. And it's all based on commercial building and on residential housing. And again, the area that we're working on, I've been working very closely with the proposed builder in that area. It's very similar to what we're looking at across the street at Wayside Farms. You know, and I've heard people talk about, you know, what type of building coming in a 40B. You should go down and talk to the residents at Wayside. Ask them, you know, where are they living? What does their area look like?
I don't mean to cut you off, but we're kind of drifting from the topic at hand. So we're going to vote on Article 15.
14.
I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself with all the, there's a whole bunch of them. Sorry about that. We're going to vote on Article 14. It just needs a majority vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The moderator clear that the noes have, it does not pass.
Mr. Moderator, I'll call for a hand count, please.
Absolutely. John.
Oh, yeah, that's true. He wants to know if he wants to...
Mr. Gardner, you can ask the Senate people any questions at all, but you don't, you don't want to answer. The Senate people, you don't want to answer. To the behalf of Senate people, tell us come forward, please.
On the...
Please tell me that I'm required to...
No, go ahead, it's a, it's a...
It meant it, it meant the law was amended.
It really...
We're going to do all in favor, raise your hand and keep it up until it gets under the count.
You want to decide?
Because he's not a voter, I know. No, he's not.
All in favor.
But they're not looking at him yet. No, he's not, he's not voting in favor.
All in favor.
I know, we're just watching a particular person who's on the planning board.
Let me just remove the hat.
Is it voting in favor? Put your hand up.
It's a vote in favor.
So it's basically just Republicans versus Democrats.
I know, I know. But you care about the town's finances.
It's a crime, it's bad for the country.
I know, I know.
English?
I don't.
The motions defeated, 91 to 39.
All right, so, just a little different. For Articles 15, 16, and 17, 15, 16, and 17, I'm going to take a vote on all three together, knowing that we probably know the outcome, considering, we still have one article after that, that's a separate article. So Kevin, Mr., oh. Mr. Riley, planning board, this will, this, what he's doing will take care of 15, 16, and 17.
Mr. Moderator, respectfully request that we pass over Articles 15, 16, and 17.
A motion to pass over, all in, that means it's off the, we're not doing it, based on what happened with 14.
So it's a motion to pass over, all in favor? Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The majority, majority is to pass it over. 15, 16, and 17 are done for the night.
They, they, I was afraid.
Okay, hold it a second. Mr. Winifella, you want to hand?
Handing over.
Tonight, it's gone.
Ever.
No, not ever. It's gone tonight.
No.
I will let you vote on it, but even if it's voted on, it can come back. Well, we're going to vote, I mean, I need seven people to stand up that are opposed to passing it over. I need seven people to stand up, and we'll do a hand count. All right, we're going to do a hand count. Tell us.
This is what I was afraid of. Yeah. They can, they could, it could be brought back.
It's mine.
All in, I just want to, all in favor of passing over, I mean, it's, we're not, it's over for tonight on those three articles. All in favor, raise their hand. For passing over. 15, 16, and 17. Are you going to count them? Can I choose, count yourselves?
Why am I sitting here with my hand up?
Oh, they think it doesn't...
While they're counting, just to be clear, but if you vote against, if we have voted against it, doesn't mean it cannot come back. Okay, wanted to make sure everyone's aware of that, because this is doing the same thing except expediting our time.
It can be brought back.
Oh, yeah, no, it could be brought back. The ones that I'm in for, it hopes to...
There's no ban on it, like there is with other typical zoning articles.
No. There's only a ban, so there is a ban that gets far. But the planning board, that doesn't get any support, so they can bring back the same argument, so it's more like...
Yeah, petition.
Yeah, then there's a...
Yeah, petition.
That's what that takes.
It's not, they can, you know, you can bring it back. So we just call for a voice vote on Article...
What is 18?
Oh, it's just the accessory law.
Do we not put people who shed to that again?
So what I'm going to do now is entertain a voice vote on Article fifteen as presented. All in favor of Article fifteen as presented, which that means it's in your warrant, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Article fifteen doesn't pass. Article sixteen, same thing. We're going to do it as presented, which is in your warrant. All in favor of Article sixteen as presented in the warrant, say aye. All opposed? Article sixteen fails. Article seventeen as presented in the warrant, all in favor of Article seventeen as presented in the warrant, say aye. Opposed? Thank you. Onto Article eighteen. Mr. Riley.
Mr. Moderator, I moved at the town vote to amend the East Bridgewater zoning bylaw, Section sixty-seven, as is printed in the handout entitled STM ten seven twenty-four, amended Articles fourteen, fifteen, and eighteen, and as shown on the screen.
I have a second motion made, second. Capital, nobody, Dave, you don't have anything on this either one, right? Mr. Riley for discussion, if any.
So, Mr. Moderator, this is an article that is proposed as a result of the recent passage of the Affordable Homes Act that was signed into law by Governor Healey in August of this year. The intention of the bylaw, the intention of the law, was to help address the perceived housing shortage in Massachusetts. And part of that law dealt with accessory dwelling units. An ADU is basically a secondary residential living space that's located on the same lot of a single-family home. For example, an ADU could be located within an existing primary residence as perhaps a basement conversion. Could be new construction in addition to an existing private home. Or it could be completely detached as a cottage or a renovated garage. The new law gives landowners the ability to construct an ADU as a matter of right in single-family residential districts. That is what the law is. The ADU can be a maximum, rather, of half of the gross floor area of the principal dwelling that exists, or nine hundred square feet, whichever is smaller. Like other communities, the town of East Bridgewater is now under a state mandate to allow this type of construction. However, there are still some restrictions or requirements that local communities can impose, and that is the purpose of this article. The new bylaw, if adopted, would provide for site plan review by the planning board. It would assure adherence to Title V septic requirements. It would control the height of detached ADUs and the location of ADUs on lots. And it would also control short-term rentals of those premises. So again, we are under a mandate. What we are trying to do is to make, or is to best address the issue of what local control we can have under that mandate, and that is the purpose of this bylaw amendment.
Any further discussion on Article eighteen as presented? Mr. O'Flaherty, and then the gentleman come behind you.
Yeah, again, Richard O'Flaherty, Thirty-One Hobart Street. Does the law stipulate that it's for family members only, or could renters, you know, would they be able to rent it?
Kev, can you get up at the mic?
There is no owner occupancy requirement under the state law.
You mean family member occupancy?
Owner, right. So you can rent to me or whoever.
Okay. I'll think about that. Well, um...
I'm not a bad guy, really.
Five thousand dollars a month. I'm a proponent for this proposed bylaw. I just think if you have a son or daughter that is just about to graduate from college and is just getting into the workforce, but can't afford an apartment, this would be a good example for them to stay at home till they can save enough money, you know, to go out on their own. Or a family member, like a mother or father, like what I have as an in-law setup. You know, this here could be detached or it could be attached. So it's another way for families to still stay together.
Sir?
One, Ponstree. I wonder if we could do an amendment to this to require a minimum of ten thousand square feet on the particular lot that the accessory building would go on? And also consider if somebody has a merged lot, because the town likes to merge things to make it easier, which steals the rights of the property owners. Because there's a lot of lots in town that were half acres and the town merged them on the tax maps, even though they were dated as separate lots. So I'd like to add a provision to this that any lot that's been merged can be unmerged by the landowner. And if he chooses to build on that unmerged lot, that ten thousand square feet is the minimum size.
I've got to ask for town council interpretation, because I think it's above and beyond the article, but I'm going to ask for the town council's interpretation. That's why we pay them the big bucks.
Mr. Moderator, an amendment like that is beyond the scope of the article. It's certainly something that could be proposed, considered by the planning board. But for the purposes of the article and the warrant, this amendment is beyond the scope.
Well, the reason I want to make the amendment, because there's a lot of lots in town that the landowners would like to build on that empty lot that are vacant, but because the town merged them, the town doesn't want to give a permit for it. I've already gotten a big battle with the planning board over this and the planning board lost on most of the issues. But, back to the issue. Can we amend it to include unmerging lots to also comply with this? So it's a simple clause. Landowners will have as a right to unmerge lots that are at least ten thousand feet or bigger. Keep it simple.
I still, I still think, and again, I see the town council, I still think it goes beyond what this article has. I think that may be a separate article for a different time, unmerging lots, because I tend to agree with you, that they merge lots and they...
Why don't we let the voters make the decision whether we can amend it?
Because I'm going to, I'm going to rule it out of order for this hearing, is what I'm saying. Like, I think, we've got town councils, so if that gets on there, the whole thing could get shot down instead of the general. So town council advises. I don't decide without something that's legal enough, but I do...
Just his opinion.
I do, no, I understand, I understand, but I am going to agree that that's outside the scope of what's before us today.
Everybody raise your hand if you agree to change this. Okay. The town is...
I hear you, though. I hear you, though.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Ron Hedlund from Pinewood Path. I got two questions. Number one, I've got the original, you know, town meetings where we're looking at an Article eighteen and it's not mending Article eighteen? Is that what we're doing here?
No.
Okay. So there's a bunch of confusion based on...
Wait, is there some, is there some confusion as to what's in the books?
He's got the original printed one.
Oh, so what, I think what happened, there was paperwork passed out before the meeting?
So is this a change to a current bylaw, zoning bylaw?
Yeah, yes, it isn't to the county, because the county requires...
So basically, you're saying you can take the R1 zone, and I can be an investor, and I can come in and start buying up property, and then I can make a second unit in that property, and then I can rent the property out?
No, let Mr. Riley explain.
You can do that tomorrow if you wish. That is the law.
So the state law is overriding the current zoning law unless we make this amendment?
As I explained, what we are trying to do is to, is to strengthen, in the ways possible, the local control under that state law that was enacted in August of this year.
Anything further on Article eighteen as presented? Again, this is just a majority. All in favor of Article eighteen as presented, say aye. The chair's going to determine that the ayes have it, that it passes. Motion to adjourn the meeting? Seven people stand up, please. That, that, in their heart of hearts know they voted against it. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. All right, we'll have a count.
Can I ask one thing in our group? I don't know about those guys over there. One hand only, please. Leaning on your hand like this, we can't tell whether you're falling asleep or you want to vote for or against it. So one hand like this.
Article eighteen passes sixty-four to forty-seven. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. So moved. Everyone have a good fall, and we probably see you back here sometime before Christmas. Thank you.